Can I interrupt one second? I apologize. I don't care who made the motion to call the community to order. I apologize.
We just do a roll call.
I'm sorry. I'm putting the agenda.
We have nothing yet.
I'm sorry. I'm still on vacation. Okay, I agree.
That's okay. So, two A is Google agenda.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Rod. Motion by Rod, seconded by Dia. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And should be Google the March 2nd, 2020, regular executive session minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Rod, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Stay please.
Stay please. Motion carries. Should we manage to treat a dozen board and create school news?
Board members, I think I might just hold off on any school news this evening because I know you've all worked very hard this weekend to be a part of our special board meeting yesterday afternoon.
Will they do through any citizens' comments? Do you have any citizens' comments as well?
As of right now, there are no citizens' comments.
Thank you. Number two four, board is a personal connection. And we also have an agenda that should be sitting at your table.
Board members, will you allow me a moment to recognize someone who's not only a colleague, but someone who I trust as a dear friend? I'm referring to this fantastic lady just over here. We're talking about our dear Jackie Braker. Thirty-plus years of service to this community, and she's done it with a great deal of love and compassion. I think everyone knows Jackie in town, and Jackie knows everybody in town. And they know her not just because of her knowledge, but because she's such a wonderful person. I consider it to have been an honor to have worked with you. I learned a great deal from you, your kindness and your willingness to always try new things. I know this much is true, that when Jackie's end of her career here in the district finishes up, likely around the end of May, she will still be willing to lend us a hand with phone calls of, "Oh." She will sprint to the finish.
Absolutely.
That's who she is, and we just wish you only the very best. Jackie, I understand that you have two grandkids on the way, and they're just finishing up the building or remodeling of a home up north. And now it's time for you to enjoy the fruits of your labor. Congratulations.
Thank you. You'll be missed. Thank you. Second. By Jeff, second by Dia. Kimberly? Sorry, your grace is so far away. Kimberly? Okay. Yes. Motion by Rod, seconded by Dia. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two five. Aye. As a consensus, there anything anybody would like to pull out? Motion to approve, second agenda. So, motion by Kimberly, seconded by Jeff. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number two six, session eight, six A is our closing committee.
Well, I know that this board of education has been highly enriched, not only in this topic, but then also the updates that have occurred throughout the day today. The public would be pleased to know that we continue to receive strong guidance and support from our board, and thank you for that. A number of developments since yesterday afternoon for the depletion meeting, that emergency meeting, as I referenced earlier. During that meeting, the board had not the committee watch live on the video from the Dade County Public Health Department, in which they publicly acknowledged that it is now mandatory school closure. And since then, it's since developing further. It seems like what happened yesterday afternoon was actually a week ago. Because someone is moving in terms of a very fast pace. Also, yesterday afternoon, the board began here a little bit of an update with regard to where we've been in our planning processes and where we hope to go with our journey of a hybrid of a virtual learning model. It might be helpful then to bring you up to speed tonight as to what's happened in the past probably 26 hours or so. First and foremost, I'm pleased to tell you that you have an amazing team of, and I know you know this because you live it every day, you have an amazing team of staff members who have just pulled up their sleeves and got the job done. From our teachers reaching out directly to our students, our staff reaching out directly to students who know that they need a little bit of extra TLC, that's happened. To our food service folks, creating lunches and breakfasts. A hundred fifty of them in time for 11:30 dissemination today. We have a report of about 10 sat lunches were received today. But we imagine that that number will only ramp up here as the week goes on. Families who are listening to this or on the call tonight know that we have six locations all throughout the Montmoreban area, for that matter. So, Mount Vernon Unit, Blue Mountains. Please refer to the information we have on our district's website. It also will be helpful to know that we begun to, as a result of getting phone calls and emails, the number of those phone calls have begin to dwindle a little bit. And so, we begin to develop what I call our skeleton crew, particularly around our administrative assistants. What we're doing right now is we are developing rotations within our buildings such that every administrative assistant need not be in the building at any given time. They're taking turns, and we have schedules developed in each building. As of now, all of our buildings will remain open from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday, with the exception of spring break. And at that time, the district office will take all inquiries there, assuming that we're allowed to still continue to be in operation mode. The other thing I thought may be helpful for the board to hear, and our community as well, is we've received word from the Department of Public Instruction that the number of hours or minutes, as you will, have now been lifted for this year. And so, that creates, I think, a little sense of calm in ourselves that we're not rushing to do something just for the sake of doing it, but we're doing it because we want to make certain it's good for the end user, our children. And so, many people have asked, "You know, you should be doing what X school district is doing. They're doing virtual school." I've been on phone calls with superintendents all day long, and there is not a single school district in this same county right now that is doing virtual learning as of today. So, I just want to be clear about how school districts or including Mountmore are just trying to be deliberate in their approach to developing virtual learning. And I will admit, we are not where we need to be right now to get it launched through the end of this week. But quite frankly, we've also told our community that as well, that the earliest we think we'd be getting to a virtual learning solution would be by April or sixth. And so, we appreciate everyone's grace and patience. We understand that if we don't get this right, it's going to be problematic for us from a technology standpoint. We're also thinking about children and families that don't have computers and don't have Wi-Fi hotspots. How do we know who those families are? We're doing our best, and one of the ways that I think we're trying to achieve that is, you may remember, we recently moved to online registration. And we've been able to ask for pain those families who have not done online registration in our district. And then now we're in the process of reaching out to those individuals and saying, "You didn't do online registration, but we think that might be because you didn't have access to a computer. Do you need a computer for your children?" And if we can, then we definitely will get them a Chromebook. We're in the process of mobilizing 25 rated hotspots that we purchased that have been loaded up with access to Wi-Fi, and we intend to likely put those out throughout the community, either in the hands of individuals or if we find that there's such a great need, likely putting them maybe on a bus or something like this that can be kept overnight in certain communities that will allow people to access those Wi-Fi hotspots with the Chromebooks. Another question I think is coming up that might be helpful for the board to know is that, what about this testing? We'll get back to it. We got forward examination testing. And I'm going to quote directly from an email I received from the Assistant Deputy Superintendent of the Department of Public Instruction. And he said, "It's increasingly clear that it will not be possible to complete testing this year due to the pandemic." So, this is another sign for us that, again, we should just stay focused on doing what we can to continue learning, our responsibility to continue learning, but do so in a responsible way without worrying about these formal tests as well. I wanted to also make mention the fact that, as I know that we're close partners, as part of our strategic plan with the village. I've been in contact with Vic Owen. Vic Owen is our village administrator, and he has reminded me that they will be closing their offices to all visitors effective the end of the day today, March 16th, that their business day. It's probably 4:30 or 5 o'clock or so. And when I was part of a emergency management planning teleconference this morning, it was confirmed that all voting will continue regardless of what happens with the pandemic. And so, he has asked me to spread the word that in-person absentee voting will begin on Wednesday, that's this week, March 18. And to accommodate that, it will be leaving the front doors open of the office for people to go to the second floor conference room so they can get what the questions they may need in person or online. So, please know that all systems continue to be in effect regardless. Maybe I'll stop there and just check in and see what kinds of questions, thoughts, concerns you might have. How can we help?
So, any requirement for hours and minutes as any requirement?
That's exactly right. Yeah, that's great news, isn't it?
Yeah.
I know that we talked Sunday, and you've talked now about kind of the possibility of doing online or virtual or something. I know that they've already, the district has already reached out to people about coming in to pick up supplies. I'm worried we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't have a framework. We don't know what's possible. We don't know what that'll look like. We seem to begin with the details before we have the big picture. And I think we have more pressing needs, like how are grades being handled? We're at the end of a, this is a little bit of a grading period, and we have to do to add graduation requirements, GPA that are tied to that. So, I don't want us to be in a rush right now to do any lockdown or under the whole detail to build a framework. Do you feel that your team is able to develop an umbrella framework? Big picture, what might happen on the next three weeks? Or is that not just tour?
Well, thanks for asking that question. We have developed a framework. We're sensitive to putting out that framework publicly now. And the reason for that is because we don't know what's going to happen with quarantine district officials. So, I know many of you right now are working out of your homes yourselves. And so, we have a system in place. It's our thought that we would unveil that system during the week of March 30th for implementation during the week of April the 6th. It's a model that I think is very familiar to a number of our staff members. But then we also want to provide opportunity to those staff members who don't know how to use that platform, to do some online training during the week of March 30th with an understanding that expectations will continue to grow as we move throughout the quarantine period. So, yes, your questions about graduation and what students might require to have a grade, those sorts of things, we've asked Paul Christiansen and Cody Lundquist. I think I copied the board into an email I sent to all staff last night, maybe about 9:00 o'clock. And they are now working on an answer to the question about grades for the third quarter. And we should have that out for our staff soon. But as it relates to the fourth quarter and what those grades will look like, we don't have that system down yet, the expectation down yet, because we're working on the platform for delivery first. I think that if we don't have that platform and we don't have the capacity to roll it out, then there are other questions that are going to be for not. I can see kind of a backwards design in your thinking, and I thank you for that. But which comes first, for chicken or the egg? We felt as though that we needed to get the platform in place first, get the PD in place second for staff, and then begin to talk about what will those expectations be for grades for the fourth quarter. Does that help, Ed? Kirk shed some light?
Yep. It's just hard because no one's been through this before. It's hard to crack it in and see something.
Very concrete. I didn't answer one of your other questions. Can I go back? And that was with regard to, you know, you've seen emails now saying, "May I could you please come up and pick up certain things?" And you may have seen in the letter I sent to parents last night saying, "We're really only looking for people to pick up critical items, like medications or medical devices." And they said, "If you needed those things, won't you please email our principals?" Wouldn't you know it, our principals walked into their buildings this morning and had a lot, a lot of emails. What defines critical? I thought I tried to do that in the letter. But then I also recognize that some kids, and their musical instruments or their books, that's very toilet paper right now, right? And so, we need to give families their opportunity to get what they need. And so, we've developed a system today that will allow that to happen beginning tomorrow. Moreover, we felt as though that it was important for us to give kids an opportunity to get their writing journals, get their other kinds of books that they're doing for math and the like. So, that way, if we are able to move towards a virtual learning experience, we don't have to worry about it in two weeks of getting the bathroom of the building. When that curve that the CDC talks about is beginning to ramp up even more. So, we're trying to be as proactive as possible, while at the same time recognizing that we are creating some hardships for some families. And we're going to do everything we can to get the materials they need in our hands based upon a check-in checkout model that we have. We're monitoring everybody's coming in to get their materials. For those who don't have them, we're going to find a way to get them to them. So, does that help answer your little morning question? Thank you for raising the question. When it comes to virtual learning, I want to be clear, though, that people should not expect that the students would be on the internet for a whole eight hours a day. We know that any virtual learning program supports a maximum anywhere between, at the highest at high school, about three hours. So, for our little ones, K-2, I'm not advising them to go to very much online learn. You know that we have some packets that have been developed and are in the process of being disseminated to families. And at grades three through 12, that's where we're going to start to really focus on virtual learning in an age-appropriate way. How about other ideas or questions that might be out there? May I ask if Scott, if you have any updates? I'll let you go. I want to also send my gratitude to Scott publicly. Scott, while I was away on vacation, or the brunt of a lot of communication that needed to be done, Scott, you continue to impress in so many ways. And that guy that sits to your left right now, George Chad, he looked pretty cool. Dave, you've been mentoring me again from second to ninth seed to helping us develop our contingency plans. While all the while, still continuing with the regular work. We've got buildings full of people like this right now who are just doing some amazing things for our kids and our families. And I know you joined me extending your gratitude.
Yeah, we have a building plan for after the kids come in and pick up necessary.
That's exactly right. In fact, that's why we put the deadline in. If you did hear the question, callers, "Do we have a building-wide cleaning plan?" The answer to that is yes. We put a deadline in for families to come in to access and get instruments and these sorts of things. That's at the close of business on Wednesday. So, that way, now everybody's out. And then we can start the process of getting in and doing the touches, the cleaning and the like. Yes.
Other questions? Thank you for the question.
You're welcome.
Thanks for all of your input.
Thank you. It's a great clean effort, that's for sure.
Number two sixty, process for use of facilities for consideration?
I move that item to sixty table.
Second. Your second?
Jennifer did. Sorry, she's talked a little loud.
Jennifer did.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jeff, at table sixty. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Table that's adjourned. Number two sixty, NSBA annual conference update. So, I think this update is pretty easy. This conference has been canceled. Nobody will be attending this year. Hopefully, there are opportunities in the future to attend conferences like that. And number two sixty, information advocacy report?
I move that item to sixty table.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Dia, to table sixty. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, number two, action items. Study consideration of 2020, 2021 budget review.
Board members, this is something that was shared within our finance committee just recently. It's part of what we do a couple of times during the year. If you'd like an overview, a detailed overview, we'd be happy to do that this evening. But I know that you're well seen in this document, and would ask for your consideration for approval. Motion approved, budget revisions?
Second. Motion by Dia, seconded by Kimberly. Further discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, study the long-range facility plan consideration of summer 2021 work models.
We are really excited about this bit of news tonight. If ever there's silver lining in any cloud, it is that we've really got some fantastic work lined up. The board previously sought bids on a number of projects. And we are on track, on time. We have the bids for the projects that would be proposed. And tonight, while in executive session, because it's private information, we'll be sharing that information with you. Suffice to say, we're in a really good spot from a financial perspective, so much so that we would be promoting to the board tonight that all of the projects that you had on your list, and then some, will actually be covered without having to go to a third borrower, the authorized borrower from our electric, thus saving the taxpayers the burden of additional $5.5 million in additional taxes. So, what are some of the projects? You may remember that the board is looking at a roof, right? Well, as a matter of fact, a steel roof here. Also looking at the membrane of the IC roof, as well as parking lot, reconfiguring this entryway and exit way here of the middle school, as well as outbacked by the playground where the kids are at, as well as several other enhancements along this main road for additional lighting. And then some additional touches. But all of these, by the way, absolutely are part of the question that the community approved around building systems and infrastructure, safety and classrooms for the 21st century. Safety-wise, again, looking at additional lighting for the outside that's going to more energy-efficient lighting. Lockers, infrastructure. The lockers in this building, for example, haven't been touched since the building opened and are needed through TLC as well. So, we'll have a complete list. I know you've seen that list. I know the community's seen that list on a number of occasions. But when I do the board recap tonight, I'll be sure to include that list with it. Might I be able to answer any questions? Of course, we're fortunate to have David and Scott here in the audience.
What was the anticipated interest on that $5.9 million borrow that's going to be avoided?
Four and a quarter percent to 4.5%. Here again, if you were to borrow right now, we're in a very favorable interest rate. You may have heard the feds cut a whole point. Did they not last year? They had a point to almost a zero. Almost a zero. So, yeah, we're thinking that we won't need to touch that, assuming that this is amenable to the entire board.
And you know what? I appreciate the understanding of the interest rate. What was the gross interest then that we would have paid? Just over a million dollars over that time, over the borrow.
Thank you for those questions. How about others? Is that north? This small north lot become completely staff and student parking? I know there's been some storage, some equipment stored on that. Have a loader lot? Do you need that or do you have?
The equipment that's stored under is school equipment for our school group and vendor, and it's only there seasonally. Previously, during our fragment process, we've stored miscellaneous things there, but we get back all the parking spaces. We don't lose any parking on the west side of the building. Actually, what we're doing is we're just peeling out the payments that's there.
Are you looking for a motion to approve?
Want I to ask if it'd be okay? Thank you for asking, and President Nancy, can you interrupt? If we could wait till closed session?
Oh, it's fine.
And then when we come out of closed session, we'd ask the board to please consider approval.
Other questions? Okay, we'll do that then after closed session. Number two eight, citizens' comments.
No citizens.
Can I take money? Thanks.
All right, number nine, future edits. So, listed as always, I think you said it a little more precisely. Any future or future meetings will be listed as well. Your edits, if you have anything to add, isolation, if they're just up to here. Steve, I think that's, number two ten, schedule of next meetings. So, one of the conversations that Steve and I have regarding the schedule of next meetings has been, obviously, with all of the, everything going on around the pandemic and what we want future meetings to look like. want meetings to look like, whether we have to tell the public, how we can manage it certainly this way. Any of these, we want, still to have big meetings, this is kind of an open discussion to see what, what direction the board would be going.
I mean, clearly there's, there's work that we're going to have to do. And so I'm not even, we need a strict, a striking balance between ensuring everyone's health and safety, and I think this setup tonight is terrific, but I, you know, if there's work to be, work to be done, we have, we have a responsibility to do it.
So how does that, if we should keep it to the, I don't know. Everybody is going to amount to this point, and we'll maybe meet again.
I think it's going to be just like everything else, we're going to have to take it day by day. We say that now, but three days from now, we could be a thousand cases, and it might be, maybe we can't.
There's also, it's very difficult to shelter facilities, basically, you can add or not.
Yeah, I think we just, I think we leave it as is and take it day by day.
Fair?
One thing that we are exploring just for the first time tonight with our personnel committee was an online community through Google Hangout, and that's kind of what we're doing here right now with the telephone. If we get to that point, we can certainly help you, that's what I've been exploring. Like, it's pretty easy to do this, if you've done teleconference before, it's totally off. That's only audio? No, it's video, too. Now it's video, too, yeah. They, they've given us, well, this is very, a lot of companies have really recently eaten, have they, and giving the access to their resources that normally they charge a subscription before, they're now allowing, and Google's one of those. So, yes, we intend to use that, and we played with it a little bit somewhat successfully this afternoon, not entirely successfully, but we'll get there.
Especially if it makes it make virtual. I guess it's day by day, we can work schedule for now and see what develops. Moving on to eleven, close session, kind of the close sessions for session 1925, for the non-employment, for the, for the, for the, for the, motion colonization, performance evaluation data event, hopefully, or if we don't know about authorization, or exercise to not loading. Section 1925, for the non-employment, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, for the, negotiating, purchasing, property, investing, public funds, and, and others, and spine of business. Wherever the, 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 section, in section 1925, for the non-employment, for the, for the, for the, by Angel. My own social, with personal, receiving service, literary data, specific persons, delivering consideration of specific personal problems, or the investigation charges against specific persons, except where, 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 if, 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 if,